Call this meeting to order the City Commission, Rio Grande City. It's Wednesday, May the 9th, approximately 6:03 PM here in Commission Chambers, 5332 East US Highway 83, Rio Grande City, Texas, Suite A. This time we'll have the invocation by Commissioner Jones, followed by the pledge of allegiance by Commissioner Ramirez.
All right, thank you for this day. Thank you for the much-needed rain this past week. Bless all the people here that are present for this day. Thank all those that guide us and protect us from hard ways. Guide us in making the right decisions for all the residents of Rio Grande City. And all this I ask, amen.
Amen. This time we'll have a roll call and finding a quorum. Ms. Peña?
Mayor Villarreal.
Here.
Mayor Protem Garza.
Here.
Commissioners Alinas. Commissioner Alinas is absent. Commissioner Ramirez?
Yeah.
Commissioner Jones?
Here.
You have a quorum, Mayor.
Thank you, Ms. Peña. At this time, we have item 1C, which is recognition of the 25th anniversary of the city of Rio Grande City incorporation. And we just celebrated our 25-year anniversary on May the 1st, 2018. And I know we have some individuals here who were part of the incorporation and would love to have you come up and say a few words or your experience and what it got us to. I mean, obviously, there are many individuals who came before us and they're the ones that established the platform, the foundation, because many of the city commissions laid that foundation for us to be here today. So we have several who would like to start. What we have right in front of us, Mr. Porras? I know he's not going to say no, right?
Thank you, Mayor. They caught me completely off-guard this afternoon. I wasn't expecting this. And, well, who couldn't imagine 25 years ago of where we're at right now? And I can recall being at home and my wife telling me, "You got a letter from the Commissioners' Court." I thought, "What did I do this time?" Anyway, I opened it up and it was a letter from County Judge Joe Martinez. Letting me know that I had been selected to serve in the incorporation of Rio Grande. I didn't know anything about it. I mean, I didn't give it much thought. Well, anyway, we met at the board and I can recall it was, of course, me, Lauro Lopez, Basilio Villarreal, and Noé Sánchez, the president of the Rotary Club, Joe Martinez, Ms. Anderson, Ms. Nye. And we got, we met there for the first time and I think it was in 1993, in the summer of 93. And as you recall, it was the third attempt to incorporate Rio Grande. It was dissolved in 1929 because there, they could not pay a loan for $1,000. One of the city commissioners was Lino Pérez and Julián González. So they dissolved the city in 1929, as I can recall. But anyway, we met for a couple of times and we brought in the Secretary of State and we brought in Jim Darling to give us some guidance as far as the law is concerned and the incorporation. And we finally decided to put it before the voters. And we did, went through the businesses, trying to sell the incorporation. I mean, it was not hard. There was the anti-tax league at the time and they were keeping an eye on us. They were, they would attend the meetings that we were having to incorporate. But finally, we decided to call for an election. And I believe we had about 15 candidates for mayor and about 12 candidates for city commissioner. And we sold it to the community and the business community, of course, the background of Rio Grande City, and they're all for it. And finally, we succeeded.
And how many signs were out there, Mr. Porras?
No, but, "Cállate." 15, 15 or 18 candidates for mayor. And there was another 15, 18 for city commissioner when, at the time, we were incorporating with the General Taipei Charter.
So whoever printed them made good money.
Monday?
Whoever printed those signs.
Oh, yes. Yes, the first, I mean, I know.
No, they were made of wood.
Yes, that's right. They were made of plywood, not plastic. That is very correct, Mr. Jones. I did four, five, and they were made of wood, of plywood. I mean, you know, they were before. But anyway, so we held the first meeting at the Commissioners' Court without no money, pencils, supplies, nothing. Where did we start? And I ran my campaign with Nicholson Dine, but my campaign slogan was "No Taxation." What happened was I had my compadre working for the state comptroller and he educated me as far as the ad valorem tax relief. What it calls is for a half-sent to offset the property tax. And I did the research and it came out even. 100% would collect every month. By the end of the second meeting, out of nowhere, out of bright blue, clear sky, nothing, God was on our side, here comes CPNL. Gentlemen, here's a check for $90,000. Wow, what a blessing. That was really a blessing from the Lord upstairs. Anyway, at the time, the county was having difficulty. We were having a rabies outbreak, uncontrolled growth. Economically, financially, the county was having their hardship. And that's why they were pushing for the incorporation of Rio Grande. And it was not fair for the citizens of Roma, San Isidro, and La Druya to offset the benefits, the lights, the paving of Rio Grande City. So, yeah, the people from Roma were, "Ya estaban gritando." And I don't blame them. I don't blame them one bit. So what happened in 1970, Dr. Mario Ramirez, he was a county judge, offset the property tax to leveled up and quiet down. But anyway, so on our first meeting, we decided to do an all-out Rio Grande City vaccination for dogs and cats and pets. And let me tell you, over 2,000 pets were vaccinated. That's a problem.
Which we have a rabies clinic this Saturday, by the way. Might as well plug it. Rabies clinic this Saturday?
Good, over 2,000. That's a problem, uncontrolled growth. And so we implemented every month a rabies all-out vaccination, free, free. But anyway, so, you know, being from Rio Grande City, born and raised here, of course, I wanted the best for my community. And we started implementing the no tax. So we went about 10 years without no property tax based on a half-sent ad valorem tax relief. And we would get 100% of the monies every single month. We implemented the franchise taxes. And we made sure that we're going to have the first-ever certified professional fire department personnel and police department. And we acquired that through the funds we had in place. We were very successful as far as the training was concerned. We brought in people that were trained. And of course, we had never seen a professional fire department here in Stark County, period. So we were very fortunate to have them. But anyway, so over the years, we started with the 4A Corporation of the EDC. And unfortunately, we fell into financial problems. So I was called back after I left the city. And we raised the 4A and started with the 4B Corporation in 1998, I believe. Okay? So that's what apparently is in place right now, the 4B Corporation. We closed down the 4A and started with the 4B, which serves our community better. It's more a broader corporation to serve and reinvest back into the community. Whereas the 4A was more of an industrial type. So we found out later in time that for industrial, it was very hard to compete down the river with McAllen, up the river with Laredo. Our infrastructure was not in place, period, fact. So we decided, let's foreclose it and go with the 4B and reinvest back into community and make some progress on the, for their kids, recreation parks, development, infrastructure, cleaning of the city. So we were very fortunate in that, once we got the 4B Corporation.
But if you can give us your final thoughts, Mr. Porras, because I know we have other individuals that also would like to.
Okay, I'll make it, go ahead. But whoever, believe, you know, coming here 25 years into the future and seeing how much this community has grown, I bet you have over 100 employees. I would never imagine this was going to happen. But la semilla estaba bien sembrada way back. And let me commend you guys. This is a beautiful building and this is one of the best investments you could have done for this community. Okay, and I'll cut it there.
Thank you, Mr. Porras.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Porras still serves as the chairman for the Kelsey Bass Museum and Event Center. So thank you, Mr. Porras, for your service. Now, we have Mr. Ruben Sainz. Mr. Sainz, would you like to say a few words?
Mr. Mayor and members of the council, way back in 1991, some of us were involved in another part of the incorporation and that is holding elections for the incorporation. And I see Romeo Lopez here. And at that time, we were, our kids were growing up and we were disappointed with the outlook of the community as it was. And we wanted to do something better for our young people, not only for our own, but for everyone that was to come. And we were very naive, you know. I think Romeo and I were considered rebel rousers in the school district. So some people said, "Well, you guys run the election." And I remember the day of the election. We opened up the ballot boxes close to a building there, close to the post office. By about 20 minutes after entering the election, we determined that we had been whomped. It was seven to one against it. And we couldn't figure, why would someone be against such a great project? Well, such is democracy. You have things coming at you from both sides. And I remember Romeo or RC Salinas, when we were leaving with the ballot box back to the courthouse, they said, "What's next?" I said, "Well, in two years from now, we're going to reverse the seven to one on our favor." Well, two years later, we did. I think people really began to understand the concept of a city. And people sometimes are very leery. When communities have failed and they really have the fear of failing again, we did not have that fear. We want, we know we could do it even if we had to hold plenty elections. It was going to happen sooner or later. And I'm glad it happened on our second try. And of course, we're proud of our city. And I would like to challenge you that it still has a lot of needs and you have a great opportunity to help this community become the best community it can be. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sainz. Mr. Romeo Lopez.
Gentlemen, ladies, good evening. On the issue of incorporation, I was looking at the history of incorporation of Rio Grande City. And in 1926, Rio was incorporated. 1926. In 1933, the people voted to un-incorporate. This was due to the issue of the bad economy at the time. Then Ruben might have mentioned the fact that later, prior to 1993, which is the celebration that we're doing now, we had an election and we lost it on a ratio of one to seven. Seven people were against it and one person was for it. That type of bad situation we experienced. But there again came 1993. And people like Noé Sánchez, the Rotary Club, which I was a member of at that time and still am, those were the folks that were pushing for the incorporation once again. Joe Martinez, our judge at the time. Ruben Sainz, you have recognized him and he was very active on the issue of pushing for it. And we are so thankful that we have a city that is no longer known as Las Tres Mentiras. We were not Rio. We were not Grande. And we were not a city. We are now Rio Grande City.
Thank you, Mr. Lopez. I see Mr. Garza, ValdeGarza.
Mayor, council, thank you for the opportunity to be here with you to share just a few thoughts. As you can see, there was a lot of people involved back then. And I remember going to the board because they were bringing people from Austin to tell us about how do you get a city manager and things like that. And there's so many things to share, but one of the things, in looking at the seal, I remember when we did that, you know, we opened it up to the community and it had a whole bunch of suggestions of what the city seal would be. And of course, that's what turned out. And I think it's very unique, very special. And I was so happy when it was accepted. And, you know, at the same time, one of the things that really stands out, back then, Jim Darling, Mayor Darling in McAllen, who I consider one of the premier municipal lawyers, certainly in South Texas and maybe in the state, he came and helped us for about a year, I think it was, right? Knowing that at some point, we were going to get money. But we had the top municipal lawyer helping us. And a lot of the original ordinances that we did, obviously, we were sharing from McAllen. And it didn't hurt that we had a lawyer here and me. And so it all worked out really well. But one of the things that really, I think, was special to me is I think God was looking out for us because David talked about the original election. And it was Manuel Canales, David, and myself that were about the same age. But then on the other side was Basilio Villarreal, Lauro Lopez, and Chuisolís. And it was a really nice balance of youth with experience. And I think it was important because I think, you know, if you knew Basilio Villarreal, you know, he, just like everybody that's older, like Mr. Sainz or Mr. Lopez, when you get to that age, you've seen a lot, you know a lot, you tend to be more patient. And when we're young, we tend to go very fast. And I thought that was a nice balance. And we've come a long way. But if you really look, when I see people from out of town, after the city was incorporated, that there was a central government that businesses could talk to, that's when our community really took off. And of course, we've come a long ways on budgets, on people, and all of that. And there's been a lot of people involved. And one of the things that I would encourage you is that we should look forward to our anniversary every year so that we can educate our young people. Because most of young people, you say David Porras or ValdeGarza, they have no idea what Ruben Sainz or Romeo Lopez have done for this community. And I think as a community, it would be a good idea to continually remind people that this takes a lot of people and we should take pride in what we do because we're as good as anybody else. And I'll close with this. I remember one time we went to Washington and we went with McAllen. And of course, Jim Darling was our lawyer, just like he was a lawyer for the city of McAllen. And at that time, Joe Escamilla was our mayor and, I mean, our city manager. And I remember Leo Montalvo was the mayor. And I remember thinking, "We're not going to lose a step to McAllen because Leo Montalvo will never love McAllen more than I love Rio Grande City." And I think that is what we are. If we love this community and if we just work for this community, we're always going to be better. Because I don't think we'd lose, McAllen has a lot. But we have things that McAllen will never have. Our buildings, our hunting, our fishing. And we need to take pride in all of that. And I commend all of you. Now, you all are going to be part of history with the first female. And I congratulate you for that because it is a big thing. And I can't, I have to end by saying that if there's anything I can do, you can always count on me because I love this place. And a lot of us have put a lot of sweat, tears, and even blood on it. Thank you all. Good evening.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Garza. Do we have anyone else who would like to say a few words? Anyone else regarding their... Well, to certainly, again, not say enough here about the incorporation and all the commissions that had come before us, who laid that foundation to allow us the opportunity to be where we're at today as a result of those commissions. And I know it's short, 25 years, but we have come a long ways. And certainly, congratulations to many individuals who have made this possible. And got to recognize that, yes, we have a lot of work ahead of us. That there is no doubt. But we also have to take the opportunity to recognize the successes that have come our way. And there have been many. No, as far as the employees, we have a lot of employees. Certainly, the fire department, the police department, code enforcement, your name, and all these organizations, all these entities that are making our city thrive and prosper. Businesses, in fact, today, I just came from a ribbon-cutting business here in the downtown area. And it's always great to see these businesses coming in. Of course, most recently, you've seen, I know a lot of kiddos are happy about the trampoline park hype now, which just opened last, this past Saturday, and many more that are to come. So again, congratulations to you all. Congratulations and thank you to the people who made this possible. And I know turning a seven to one, Mr. Sainz, Mr. Lopez, in two years, that is a great feat. I mean, turning it. So I'm sure you went house by house and you communicated that message that we need to do this. And that's a great endeavor. So, I mean, thank you again and kudos to make that happen and not giving up on that seven to one. That was, but again, any other comments, commissioners, anyone?
I'd just like to say thank you all to, you know, everybody involved at that time, gentlemen that are here, present today, and again, for having the vision and the foresight of, again, what this city needed to, you know, be and grow into. And again, we're also from here, from this community, and we're, again, take a lot of pride in what we do. And we just hope to lead to those expectations and, again, continue to improve in whatever we do. So again, thank you.
Well, I guess I'm the one that's been here the longest. And of course, I want to thank you for giving me that opportunity. I did have the pleasure of working with Mr. Porras and with ValdeGarza as mayor. And I believe, Mr. Porras, it was in 2001 when we changed the 4A to 4B because I was here by then. But yes, there's been a lot of, a lot of changes from 2001 to now. And I can only imagine what took from Mr. Sainz and Mr. Lopez to get Rio Grande started. Of course, at that, at that point, I wasn't, my job didn't allow me to be here in town very much. But I do commend you, Mr. Lopez, and Mr. Sainz. And they keep reminding me every Sunday because we go to the same church. So they're always on me. But yes, a lot of good things have happened and have continued to happen. The one thing that, that is probably the most frustrating is trying to get things done. It takes a lot to get things done. And I can only imagine what you all had to go through at the beginning. And, but there has been a lot of things that have been done and I'm not going to go through them. But if you look at the agenda, we're just getting ready to go into another multimillion-dollar project. And that's what it takes. And Rio Grande is moving forward. Rio Grande is strong. And thanks to you all in the community and those that got Rio Grande started. Couldn't have been done without you. So I thank you and I thank you for allowing me to serve you. So thank you very much for being here.
Commissioner?
From the oldest to the youngest in the commission. I've been here six years and it's been a great experience for me to sit here and working with a great commission. And I know that, you know, looking back, I went to a couple of commissions back in the day. And, you know, I feel blessed to be sitting here today with the great commission that we sit here. You know, we, you see us up here, you know, with good company, but, you know, there's decisions, you know, that we're placed in, you know, and some of the decisions are hard to make. But that's part of making Rio Grande better. You know, you make those hard decisions and in the long run, you stick to them and hopefully, you're hoping that you make the right decision. So, you know, thank you for everything that the past commissions and administration and everybody that took the part of building Rio Grande City and making it into a city. Because thanks to you all, you know, I'm here. So for that, you know, I can't, I'm looking forward to next week. So I won't be the rookie here anymore. Thank you.
I know we have a cake and refreshment, but we can go ahead and take a photograph up front here for those of, again, the founders per se, if we can come forward and take a picture.
There's gifts.
We're going to cut some cake and the boys will get some as we continue the meeting. But please, very nice little people, the city open. But please, very nice, we'll be sitting open.
Ah, you baited.
The gift?
We have a couple of things for you, please, before you leave, Mr. Sines. Couple of bags there for you all, these, some goodies. And please, don't be bashful, there's plenty of cake as we move forward. If no one objects at this time, we have Mr. Julian, and he was gonna be impactful, so let's see what he got here. He's gonna set the tone for the rest of the meeting here, as promised, so I'm holding you to it now.
I don't necessarily need a microphone, but I'll do it. Chris Julian, my tombstone is gonna say Fahita King, founder of the Fahita Cook-Off. And we celebrated the birthplace of the Fahita in the hometown of the Vaquero, Rio Grande City, last year. It was a huge success. We had over 3,500 people in attendance, but we lost money. It's kinda difficult to make money on a free event, but we are committed to doing it again with your permission. With the coordination of the city staff and Sarah Hernandez, we are committed to doing a better job of getting more sponsors this year. In fact, I have already received two renewals, South Texas Ford Dealers Association and Green Mountain Energy. So we're well on our way to having an even bigger and better event at the municipal park on Saturday, October 20th, 2018. My quest is to get national attention of the birthplace of the Fahita. We can prove it. It all started in the early 1900s along the Chisholm Trail, where they had cattle drives up to Fort Worth, and along the way, they would slaughter steers, and the trail boss would get the prime cuts, of course. But the Mexican cowboys, the Vaqueros, would get the side products, cabezas, tripas, mollejas, and fajitas. Well, back then, they didn't have barbecue pits, so these smart Mexican cowboys would dig a big hole in the ground, put a bunch of raw mesquite down in there, fire it up, and when it turned to coals, they would take this strip, the beef skirt, with the membrane attached, and throw it right on the coals. A few quick turns, they'd pull it back off, pull that membrane back, and the sweetest, juiciest meat you could ever have. Thus, the birthplace of the Fahita. We can prove it. This afternoon, I sent out a request for coverage to a variety of people, including Texas Monthly Magazine and the Food Network. Well, my friend from 1978, David Dunham, who happens to now be the publisher of Texas Monthly Magazine, emailed me back, "Hey, Chris, if you got a little bitty budget, place an ad, we can do all kinds of coverage for you." So, with the heritage of Rio Grande City and the longevity of the birthplace of the Fahita, we are gonna get national coverage. And as my client would say, "Come home to Rio Motor Company." I have gifts, because we all know, there's no such thing as a chicken Fahita. Have you ever seen a chicken wear a skirt? So, we started, as a publicity stunt, years ago, the Coalition Against False Fahitas, C-A-F-F. And the members are mad cats. So we proudly display our button, and each commissioner must have a button. And of course, we have a wonderful frisbee for everybody in the audience. It's all about publicity and creating a good time. And boy, did we have a good time last year, right, sir?
Sure did.
Now, the city manager is known as a flip-flop, right? First, he was on the city team, "Oh, no, he's only gonna ask you." All the city team.
I was with the winning team.
Oh, so much safer you're gonna be on the city.
The winning team.
We hope that you're here. Again, it's all up to you though, sir. So thank you very much for this opportunity.
You did not disappoint, Mr. Julian. Excellent. And yes, it's the Coalition Against False Fajitas.
There's no such thing as a chicken Fahita.
And yes, it was a great function last year, but we had multiple entertainers and...
And if this guy were gonna even have better than a...
Fantastic. It was wonderful. And yes, we had a winning team. But it was a... But thank you, Mr. Julian.
Thank you, sir.
It's, continue on with, no comeback to departmental reports, if no one objects, it's 1D, reading a proclamation, Mental Health Awareness Month. It's a City of Rio Grande City proclamation, Mental Health Awareness Month 2018. Fitness for mind, for body. Whereas mental health is essential to everyone's overall health and well-being, and whereas all Americans experience times of difficulty and stress in their lives, and whereas prevention is an effective way to reduce the burden of mental health conditions, and whereas there's a strong research that diet, exercise, sleep, and stress management can help all Americans protect their health and well-being, and whereas mental health conditions are real and prevalent in our nation, and whereas with effective treatment, those individuals with mental health conditions can recover and lead full, productive lives. And whereas each business, school, government, agency, healthcare provider, organization, and citizen, citizen shares the burden of mental health problems and has a responsibility to promote mental wellness and support prevention efforts. Therefore, I, Juell Villarreal, do proclaim May 28th as Mental Health Awareness Month in Rio Grande City. As the mayor of the City of Rio Grande City, I also call upon citizens, the citizens, government agencies, public and private institutions, businesses, and schools in the City of Rio Grande City, to recommit our community to increasing awareness and understanding of mental health, the steps our citizens can take to protect their mental health, and the need for appropriate and accessible services for all people with mental health conditions before stage four. And at this time, being myself a mental health provider, there is a need in our community, and absolutely, there are many entities that, day in, day out, they provide services in our community, counselors in different departments, doctors, psychiatrists, social workers in our community are here to support and help individuals cope and lead productive lives in spite of any mental illness or mental disorder. So, from the school district counseling departments to hospitals, the clinics, and every entity that's involved in providing mental health services, thank you for the work that they do. And again, let's move forward, and May 2018, Mental Health Awareness Month. Next business in order is item 1E, reading a proclamation, May is Lupus Awareness Month. By the way, before I continue, do we have any other mental health providers here? Mental health service providers? We have 1E. City of Rio Grande City proclamation, Lupus Awareness Month. Whereas an estimated 1.5 million Americans suffer from lupus, the chronic inflammatory autoimmune disease that can affect various parts of the body, especially the skin, joints, blood, and kidneys, and whereas lupus can be difficult to diagnose because its symptoms are similar to those of many other illnesses, and major gaps exist in understanding the causes and consequences. And whereas the Lupus Foundation of America Lone Star Charter is part of a national force devoted to solving the cruel mystery of lupus while providing caring support to those who suffer from its brutal impact. And whereas the chapter rallied the City of Rio Grande City community to wear the color purple and to further unify the support for those living with the disease, and whereas awareness is vital in raising funds for research for those affected by lupus. And it is our responsibility as a community to advocate on their behalf and to further encourage educational programs, so everyone affected by lupus can have an improved quality of life. Now therefore, I, Juell Villarreal, mayor of the great city of Rio Grande City, do hereby proclaim May 18th, 2018, as put on purple day throughout the city of Rio Grande City, and urge all citizens to support the cause of raising awareness of lupus, so that we can have a world with no lupus. Do we have any entities here representing? Next business in order is item 1F, which is reading a proclamation, May is Historic City of Rio Grande City proclamation, Historic Preservation Month. Whereas Rio Grande City has been nationally recognized as a national Main Street community, and whereas Rio Grande City is one of the most historic communities in Texas with more than 600 historic properties, and whereas Rio Grande City has been recognized in regional, state, and national print, radio, and television programs for its significant historical richness. And whereas Rio Grande City is a certified local government by the Texas Historical Commission, and whereas historic preservation is an effective tool for managing growth, revitalizing neighborhoods, fostering local pride, and maintaining community character while enhancing livability, and whereas historic preservation is relevant for communities across the nation, both urban and rural, and for Americans of all ages, all walks of life, and all ethnic backgrounds. And whereas it is important to celebrate the role of history in our lives and contributions made by dedicated individuals in helping to preserve the tangible aspects of the heritage that has shaped us as people. Now therefore, I, Juell Villarreal, mayor of the great city of Rio Grande City, do proclaim May 28th as Historic Preservation Month in Rio Grande City, and call upon our families, businesses, and residents to join their fellow citizens across the United States in recognizing and participating in this special observance. Have Mr. Porras, Historic Preservation Month, if you'd like to say a few words and keep it to a fuse, sir?
Well, it's been about a year and a half since we started the Kelsey Bass Museum. Thanks with your all's support and blessing. We've been very successful, and with no monies again, but we do have a budget now in place.
But history repeats itself.
Yes, it does. Unfortunately, it does repeat itself. Wow.
But look at what you've done, Mr. Porras.
But with money, with no money, we have been successful. And the city is también, I mean. Anyway, but it's very important that we preserve our historical buildings. There's our, we call them hidden treasures, because, you know, at the same time, we live here day in, day out, we take it for granted. How many communities would love to have these historical buildings in their community? They're treasures. We need to capitalize on them. And now that we have the museum in place, I mean, we're going forward and doing the trolleys and bringing in tourism, it's our number one ingredient for our tourist industry. So we need to take advantage, our historical district, or now that the Kelsey Bass Museum belongs to the Texas Historical Commission, where we have access to direct information and research through them. And we had some projects last year that were very successful, they had, we had the 50th commemoration of the Hurricane Beulah. We got recognized statewide and nationally, and we also had the veterans, where we're honoring the veterans from Starr County and Rio Grande City in Roma. And we have a room dedicated now that we're working on for our heroes of Starr County, and then we have a room where we honor our very own homegrown Artistic Star General Sanchez. So yes, we're very, how should I say it, concerned that we kept on to this historical district we have here in Rio Grande City. Now that we have a museum in place, that we can bring in more tourism and revive the past and bring it to the future, so our children's children can know exactly what we're talking about, that what did actually happen in the past, where their impact is affecting us right now as we speak. Okay? Then at the same time, we're doing the philanthropist. We need to recognize the people from the past that did contribute and made a contribution to our community, and it's affecting us now as we speak. So pretty much, that's where we're at right now, and again, thank you for your support on behalf of the Kelsey Bass Museum. Okay?
Thank you, Mr. Porras. And along those lines, we have the Main Street America 2018 Accredited, the National Main Street Center, and the Texas Main Street Certified, the Rio Grande City Economic Development Corporation has been recognized as 2018 Main Street America Accredited Program. And this, we are honored here, by the way, we have Ms. Rosa Gonzalez, who is the president of our Main Street Board. Ms. Gonzalez, would you like to say a few words here regarding our Main Street? And we are certainly proud, and we have the certificate as to being recognized again nationally.
Well, thank you so much, Mayor, for your kind words, and good evening, commissioners, city manager, and city staff, friends. I'd like to start to say that serving on the Main Street Board is an honor. We all on the board find it rewarding, challenging, and we have one goal, to serve our city and community with pride and enthusiasm. We're all very passionate about our Main Street program. The recognition for national accreditation, which has been bestowed on the Main Street Board or the Main Street program, and to our city as a reflection of our unity, the willingness to give of our time and to set and meet goals and complete projects that are planned throughout the year. We all have to give credit where credit is due, and that is to our former Main Street coordinator, Belinda Trevino.
Where's Belinda Trevino?
I know, there she is. For leading and motivating this board during her tenure. Her expertise, vision, and visibility in our downtown area made it possible for us to achieve such a high-ranking national award. Long hours of planning and working together on our goals has been very rewarding. We are very, very proud of this accomplishment and the opportunity to work with such a dedicated individual. She was instrumental in partnering with our community, volunteers, which ensure our success. Thank you, Ms. Belinda Trevino, for always believing in us and the Main Street program. Many thanks to all of the board as well. The board gathers, and we discuss projects and the needs of our Main Street area. We take it a step further, and we find what the needs and challenges are of the local businesses in the downtown area. We are... We are, we are actually trying to incorporate this information with a four-point approach, which is critical to our state reporting. And by doing that, we hope to open doors to shareholders which will join Main Street and open a shop or a business in our downtown historical district. As a Board Member, along with the leadership of the Coordinator, we must spark interest and excite our community on coming to the downtown area. It's just so appropriate how we talked today about the past, the future, and where we are right now, or the present. And it's just so critical that we, the present, which is the community, the city, you, the administrators, and we, the Boards that help in the community, stick together in order for us not to forget the past and welcome the future and join together in enhancing and ensuring that we're all in it together, united. So we have worked on several projects in the past in order to achieve this great award that we received. Keeping our city clean with our Rio Grande City logo and name trash cans, pole banners, benches, cleaning up our historical cemetery, beautification on Britton, painting a dilapidated storefront, which was a lot of fun, by the way, and we got out there and actually painted away that day. And of course, there are several other small projects that are all attention-getters down on the Main Street area. It's all baby steps. Nothing happens overnight. And it is a lot of work and dedication, and this is what we're here for. We have volunteers from various entities, clubs, organizations, and that is what's made this positive impact on the Main Street area. We did not and cannot do it alone. We have a work plan in place each fiscal year which meets state-mandated criteria. Organization, economic vitality, design and promotion. This work plan is geared by the budget proposed by Main Street and the Coordinator and adopted by you, the Commissioners. We understand finance, budgets, and processes, which need to be followed in order to attain our goals. We understand the routine. We always want to get things done faster than what they can be. But we understand that there's processes that we have to wait for. As we approach another budget year, we urge each and every one of you to remember us at the Main Street program and our diligence to enhance, vitalize, and beautify our historic downtown area. Strong leadership, community connections, and innovative ideas on behalf of our new Main Street Coordinator, Ms. Nancy Perez, is critical in continuing for us to shine in our city. We have numerous plans for the new work plans such as face-to-face benches and trash cans on Second Street, timeline history murals on Main, with of course the shareholders' blessings, Main Street business signs either replaced or repaired, repainting of our beautiful kiosk floor, paint our business building project, downtown Rio Grande City pot rep planting, replacing broken benches on Britton, and a historical walking tour with building markers on designated significant buildings, which was one of the great ideas that one of our Board Members, Dewey, which is in here tonight, had and we're working on that already. So meeting and speaking to shareholders, one-to-one, on revitalizing their buildings and spaces must be top priority to our Main Street Coordinator and to this Board. We will continue to educate our community on the importance of the heart of the city, Main Street. As Board Members, we'll continue to learn and bring in unique ideas and promote our Main Street and our city. In short, we cannot do this alone. We need your support. And we look forward to another exceptional year with our Main Street program exceeding our present score nationally, setting the bar higher for next year's National Accreditation, 2018, 2019. Our goals are to become a nonprofit under the City of Rio Grande City, which would make it possible for us to apply for grants and other resources that are out there in order for us to do more and bring more enhancement and revitalization to the Main Street historical area. We humbly ask you consider our dream and make it a reality. We are here to serve you, our Rio Grande City. And in closing, I have put together, without realizing, we're going to be talking, if I may, we're going to be talking about the past, the future, and the present. Here's a little big diagram of our great Rio Grande City and our vision as Main Street. In the center, you'll find the present. The City Administrators, the Mayor, our Commissioner, our City Manager, and our Main Street Advisory Board. That is the present. Our history, of course, is Main Street, where we come from when Rio Grande City was first chartered. That is our past, our historical buildings, all this wonderful richness that we have. Our future, of course, is where are we going? Of course, we are connected and growing in Rio Grande City, planning for the future. So with the present, we ensure that the past is not for button and the future is enhanced. So I appreciate your time. I wanted to make it real short, but I felt like there were so many important things to mention.
When you're nationally recognized, you have as much time as you need.
You're so proud. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Do we have other Commission Members that would like to say a few words? Do we have any?
If I may, Mayor, I have the certificate here. So currently, there are 88 designated communities that participate in the Texas Main Street Network. And out of those, we are among the 68 that were nationally recognized. The selection criteria focuses on annual progress in planning, partnerships, staffing, volunteer efforts, preservation ethic, training, and program assessment through the monthly reporting like Mrs. Rosa mentioned. The Main Street program is a volunteer-driven program, like she mentioned as well. And among our list of top volunteers are, of course, our Main Street Advisory Board. And I have the certificate here to award them and to recognize them for their efforts and for their contribution to the Main Street program and to the community. And with us today, you guys want to stand up to be recognized, Esther Ayala, the Nissalani's member, Dewey Garcia, who is not with us today, and Rio Grande City Oscar Gonzalez, who is the Advisory Board Vice President, and of course, Ms. Rosa Gonzalez, who is the Board President.
You can go take a picture over here. Of course, we gotta have a, this for the historic books, history book, Rio Grande City.
And please, if everyone, I know we have some way here, but if you guys want to join us, maybe later, we have some more pictures of lobby. We have the Texas Main Street cake, who was created by Annie Street, who is the founder of the Texas Main Street program. It's a delicious pecan and chocolate-covered cake. We have it in the lobby.
Go ahead, Mr. Porras. I promise this is the last time.
Thank you for serving, sir.
Mr. Porras, are you running for officer? Anyway, Mayor and Councilman, on behalf of the Kelsey Bass Museum Commission, I'd like to congratulate Belinda. Thank you very much for your hard work and your dedication to the Main Street program. But now, you're the curator for the museum.
All right. That's it. Come on. Well, I know we have a couple of Board Members for the, or Commission Members for the Main Street. Would you all like to share a few words? Mr. Trevino, since you were a huge part of the national recognition, would you like to say a few words, Mr. Trevino?
Good afternoon and thank you for inviting me up here. I really don't have anything else to add to what Ms. Rosa Gonzalez stated, as well as Mr. Porras. Thank you. So I really appreciate the opportunity to be the Main Street Coordinator. It is a very big deal to be nationally recognized and score that 103.75. I just want that .25 to get that 104. But it was beyond our expectations. And of course, we really appreciate your support. Mr. Jones, thank you so much for your support and your vision. Mr. Garza, who always comes to visit, even right now, he's at the museum. I know everybody else is busy. Mr. Perez, Ms. Beas, thank you so much. Even Lisette, thank you so much. Everyone, thank you. And of course, Ms. Guian and the EDC, thank you so much.
And now we know too that our museum will be nationally recognized as well. We're headed in that direction. I have no doubt that it will happen. Thanks again. Appreciate it. Again, the time that you spend. I know that sometimes it takes a lot of work and effort and time to be out there. And again, it's volunteer time, so cannot say enough about what you do and that it comes from a passion to make Rio Grande City a better place to live, to work, and to enjoy life, which falls back to our vision of our beautiful city. And again, 25 years later, we have a lot of work ahead of us, absolutely, but many accomplishments that have become, or have come before and we will continue to have. And thank you. Moving on to item 1G. We have reading a proclamation, May is National Nursing Home Week, 1G. And do we have any members from nursing? No? Yes? Oh, perfect. We'll give you the opportunity on the floor shortly. I'm going to read the proclamation at this time. City of Rio Grande City Proclamation National Nursing Home Week, May 13th through the 19th, 2018. Whereas we honor and respect our elders and citizens of any age with physical or intellectual disabilities who reside in skilled nursing care centers in the City of Rio Grande City. And whereas skilled nursing care centers throughout our area are holding events and observance of National Nursing Home Week, May 13th through the 19th, 2018, using this year's theme of celebrating life stories. And whereas I urge all citizens to visit a loved one, family member, or friend residing in any care setting and offer a kind word, a personal touch, and spend time participating in various activities to unite those from all walks of life in need of our continuing love and support. And whereas this administration is committed to quality health care, we take this moment to embrace the essence of the theme, "Celebrating Life Stories." Let's join all residents, patients, caregivers, nurses, other staff, volunteers, and visitors in celebrating their special week. I now therefore, Joel Villarreal, as Mayor of the City of Rio Grande City, declare the week of May 13th through the 19th, 2018 as National Nursing Home Week, a week to honor both our vulnerable citizens who receive care and the dedicated ones giving care. Nursing staff, please come forward. I'd like to say a few words.
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners of the Board. On behalf, I am Rena Villanueva. I'm the Administrator there at the Nursing Home, Rio Grande City Nursing and Rehab. We're located near the hospital. And this is Anna Gonzalez. She's my Director of Nurses. So on behalf of our staff and our residents at Rio Grande City Nursing and Rehab, I'm very honored. We are very honored to be here along with our staff that could be here this evening to receive this proclamation today. We are very humble to be here. We love to serve our residents and we greatly honor the opportunity to serve our community in ensuring that our residents are receiving the care that they deserve.
Thank you. Anyone else would like to say a few words regarding the Nursing Home Week? And of course, these are individuals, many of our older individuals in the community that we certainly take care of with deference and gratitude for what they've done. And many of them have served our community as well and been part of our community. So it's great to have the opportunity to care for them as well. So thank you all for the work that you do. Appreciate it. Moving on to item number 1H, Departmental Reports.
Mayor, Commissioners, we're going to have a few reports.
All right.
Consideration of the agenda.
So we'll start with, I think, Aviel and Mr. Fernando, you out there. You're going to talk about the citywide cleanup continuation.
Good evening, Mayor, Commissioners. We're just trying to bring up the citywide cleanup for the second time this year, 2018. And our recommendation is to do it once a week, a month, and preferably like maybe the last week of every month due to like for residents, to be precise on the date and stuff. So the residents will have their own stuff, any mixed trash, bulky items, tires, anything they want, just come into the 14 acres and drop them off. We had a great success the last, the first time we've done it. So we're hoping it'll be the same time, or see the same thing this time.
So we'll have a roll-off there once a month?
Yeah, a week out of the month.
One week out of the month.
Yeah. It's like maybe three roll-offs because it's different. We gotta separate everything. So and that alleviates the route for the brush truck at the same time. And at the same time, it'll, a couple of personnels that we, they help us from other departments, they'll be helping us for at least a week out of the month. So.
And what's the hours of operation for those?
That's going to be from 9:30 in the morning to 6:30 in the afternoon, Monday through Friday.
Monday through Friday?
Yeah. Actually, I made up a sign. It's four feet in height and eight feet in width. That's going to be posted on the fence, on the outside of the fence, on the 14 acres near the gate there. And that's just to let residents know what they need and the requirements. And it's got a big old six-inch letters that says, "No contractors allowed."
So we'll advertise in the paper, social media, in hopes that everybody gets, I guess, comfortable with the idea that it's a set time of the month, that when they can do that, it's going to be consistently throughout the year. We're trying to minimize, if we try to keep it open all the time, we tie up different resources. And it's not enough as. And it's not, not enough as stuff is being brought in at the same time. So, this will allow us to allow, uh, reallocate those resources during those times that they're not there, and just have them there when we're gonna know people are gonna be taking stuff. Maximize their time there.
It's a great idea because absolutely, there are many individuals who, you know, they wanna get rid of their, their materials or let's say, old furniture and having a place to go drop it off instead of having it there and leaving it at their own backyard can alleviate time and power, I mean, manpower in a sense to make sure we accommodate for that.
And if I may add, Mayor, we've been very blessed with, uh, with a lot of rain here lately. And the trimming season is, is upon us again. And, and we ask the cooperation of the citizens to, to cooperate with, uh, with our, with the system, the way it's supposed to work. And that, uh, that they be patient with us and, and, uh, you know, in separating the, the items so that they can be disposed of. And, uh, you know, to wait, uh, when, when it's their turn of the month to do their tree trimming so that it can, it doesn't have to sit there in, in, in front of the street of their residents and, uh, help out and cooperate with us to, to help us do a better job. So, it's just a reminder to the public to, to be aware that, uh, it is hard to get into the alleys to dispose of brush and, and bulky items.
Right.
And, uh, and that's part of, that's gonna be part of our citywide cleanup. So, we ask that, we ask the public to be cooperative and, and try and help us out as much as possible.
Right.
Thank you, Mister Science.
Thank you.
Mister Hernandez?
Good evening, Mayor.
Mister Hernandez.
Commissioner. Um, for the Tourism Department, as Mister Cristian, for Julian mentioned, we will be having the Fajita Cook-Off. And, uh, before we get to the Fajita Cook-Off, we are planning the Freedom Fest event. We had our third coordination meeting, uh, today. And with us today is Andy Hernandez. He will be speaking on behalf of, uh, Ben from, Ben De Leon, uh, from Solido, uh, approached Commissioner Jones. Um, he was interested in partnering with the city to have the Freedom Fest event. They will be assisting us, um, financially with this event, which is great. Takes off a lot of pressure of getting a lot of the sponsorship. And another very important reason, um, why I thought this was such a great idea is it helps us to promote the event even further. Uh, we do what we can, obviously, on social media and newspaper and, and billboards. And we still get, um, comments occasionally, "Oh, I didn't know y'all were doing this event." You know, so it's like, we're already going on the fourth year. So, I think partnerships are important because it helps us spread the word. It helps make the events, uh, larger. He has a very, uh, big fan base. He travels all over. He, he plays, Solido plays almost every weekend. Um, so, he'll help us definitely to get more recognition for this event and hopefully make it bigger and better like the mayor requests.
Hey, when you're a Grammy winner, come on.
That's right. That's what I said. Very proud, we're very proud. They're all from Rio Grande City and, and they're, they're really looking forward to this event. I can see the, the dedication that they have to it, the excitement, um, working together. We, you know, have to set, of course, uh, guidelines. This is how we want it to be. It's representing the city. And they've agreed to everything that we've put out. So, um, as we go through the agenda, you'll see that the contract is on there. Another very important thing to note is they are, um, conscious of the fact that we have our nonprofit organizations, which is our Boys and Girls Club and the Crime Stoppers. And they're willing to, um, use some of the proceeds that they get from this event because they'll be selling, um, beverages, uh, waters and things like that. Um, so, from the money that's made from there, they will be donating to our two nonprofits. So, that's really great for us because we're always looking for, you know, funds for these, for these two organizations. Crime Stoppers because they're always out doing the toy drives, the Thanksgiving, um, always giving back to the community. And the Boys and Girls Club because we know this is a huge need in our community to have this, these types of clubs, um, after-school programs and things. So, um, with us is Andy. I'm gonna have him explain a little bit more about the event.
Mister Hernandez, I was about to call you up.
Hernandez?
I was about to call you up.
Good evening, Commissioners, Mayor, City. Uh, first of all, I wanna thank Mister Commissioner Jones. I approached him, you know, wanting to do something for the city, an event, and, you know, he led me to Misera. And that's when I decided, you know, because I was just gonna do something small, just something, you know, basic. But then that's when I called Ben. I said, "Ben, you know, what do you think of putting an event together?" Because I know at that time, Freedom Fest was gonna kinda be iffy if it was gonna be done or not. And I know that the goal of Ben has always been because he's from Rio Grande, his hometown. They're, uh, Grammy Award winners. They wanna do what other cities do, like, they wanna have a Solido Day. And that's when I came and I offered it to him and said, "You know what? You know, they're asking if I can help out with this event coming up called Freedom Fest. Why don't we join forces and put something together?" And he loved the idea. Like I said, um, thanks to Commissioner Jones for, for hearing me out, Mayor Rial, and everybody here for, for hearing us out. It's going forward. I got people from Corpus Laredo, from all over the place coming down to this event. Um, I know that, uh, don't be, don't be surprised to see, uh, City Manager Perez wearing a big old buckle after this because he's with the winning cooking team and the winners are gonna get the buckles, okay? So, he's already excited about wearing his buckle to work. But no, like I said, uh, we're in it for the long haul. I mean, like I said, it's a good, it's a good thing that we have, you know, the, uh, talking about the history of Rio Grande. And I guess this is where I fall in place. It's just not a better, perfect time to talk about this. Um, I love entertainment. I love bringing more to the city. And I'm in it for the long haul. We wanna keep this every year. We wanna keep it going bigger and better and just bring more entertainment, more excitement for our community. So, as of right now, everything looks fo, everything looks good. We're going forward, no setbacks. And, uh, we're gonna break records. Hopefully, God willing, that's the plan.
And is the 30th, is it the 30th?
Yeah, we're gonna do the Road and Rope in the 29th. The main attraction will be the June 30th Saturday, which will have the cook-off, the concert, the car show, the fireworks and all that. And we also wanna do, uh, a two-day turf, uh, softball tournament. And it's like, like I mentioned to y'all, Mister Perez also mentioned that he wants to call out surrounding committees that each city, uh, calls each other out on a softball tournament. Rio Grande, if Mister, uh, Mister Ramírez here could be the runner, since he's good at that. So, you know, because Hernán doesn't wanna run. Mister Hernán doesn't wanna run, so. But yeah, I mean, bring in, bring in Ruiya, bring in Roman. You know, you know, ask them if they wanna participate, you know, city officials, department heads, city employees to, to join with each other, city, and, you know, have a, have a friendly competition.
Sure.
Are you gonna have a senior leave or what?
I want, uh, you want to write, Walter Walker? There you go. So, like I said, uh, thank you. I mean, I've, I've been honored to serve with the, back in the day with Main Street, with Chamber of Commerce. I mean, I just want the best for our community. I did leave for a while. I left to continue my studies back in San Antonio. But there's no place like home. I had to come back. So, I'm, I'm glad to be back and I'm here to serve and do what I have, whatever I can for my city. So, uh, is there any, anything you all have any concerns, questions about?
No, but, uh, I mean, this is a great venture to have this opportunity to partner up and of course, pooling the resources. It's always great when you have these type of collaborations and partnerships, and it's a win-win for everyone, so.
No, and it's been great. Like I said, I mean, Sarah's been an amazing help, even though she's hitting me across the head day in and day out. But I mean, our, our thing is here is like Mister Julian was saying, our goals to Nigel, I mean, yes, we want, our, our main focus is gonna be our town, but we want people from out, out of, out of area, other, other areas to come in and enjoy these events. You know, it's like, one good example, Valde-Texas have the hometown Palominos. Their first year, they did their event, they brought in maybe 100 people. Now, you can't even fit that in that event. It's just so packed. Same thing with Los Músicas and Poty, the Strawberry Festival. It's a three-day event, I mean. And that's what we wanna hit to, that every year gets bigger and better. And, you know, we have people from all over coming down to this event. And thank you to the city, of course, for, for being in partnership with us on this. I mean, what better way to do it?
Yeah, we're happy to have Ben and Solido come on board, finally.
Hernandez?
We're happy to have Ben and Solido finally on board.
Oh, yeah. Like I said, I, I know that me and Ben had been talking about this and he had always been wanting to talk about. I know that when they were fir, won their first Grammy, y'all did a big thing for them. And he kinda wanted to continue that every year. And I guess somewhere along the line, I don't know what the miscommunication was. So, when I did tell him, I go, "You know, let's do this. Let's do a Solido Day." Let, but, you know, instead of just calling it Solido Day, we could do the Solido Freedom Fest. And he loved the idea and he just, you know, he's excited. And hopefully, like I said, we got, so far, I know we have people like Los Palominos, Solido, Elliot Reina, Jimmy Gonzalez, Las Phoenix, uh, Eliseo Robles. That's just some of the lineup that we have of musicians coming into this concert.
Great.
So, it's gonna be a great turnout, God willing.
So, a two-day event or three-day event?
The main, the main thing is gonna be Saturday. But like I said, we're gonna start, we're gonna do the Road and Rope in the day before Friday. I know that we're gonna start like at 7:00 in the morning till 3:00 in the morning. These, I believe these guys come and they're there all day and all night. Our main, our main focus is Saturday, which is our main day, which is the concert, the car show, the cook-off and all that good stuff. And then at the same time on Saturday, the softball tournament may be going on. And then if, God willing, we get enough teams, we'll even continue it on Sundays. So, it should be a three-day event, but our focus is gonna be that Saturday, June 30th.
Sounds great.
Alright.
Thank you, Mr. Hernandez.
Appreciate it. Uh, and Happy Nurses Week and Happy Teachers Week for all the teachers, alright?
Thank you. You see these great events coming up, so, excited. I'm sure you're already looking forward to your victory there.
We need a bigger, uh, sign and a background.
And buckles, they got metal, you know?
Okay, uh, any other department reports? No? Very good. Thank you.
Next business and orders, item 2, Consent Agenda. It is Letter A, Approval of Departmental Travel Request. Letter B, Approval of Minutes from Previous Meetings. Letter C, Approval of Action Taken at the Meeting of RGC DC Board of Directors Meeting Held on May 1st, 2018.
Learn objects in the Mayor. I'd like to, uh, make a motion to approve items, uh, 2A, B, and C.
Okay, we have a motion to approve. Have a second by Commissioner Garza. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye opposed? Motion carries. Next business and orders, item 3A, Discussion and Possible Action to Approve Resolution Number 2018-12 to Authorize the Submission of a Grant Application for Funding Through Operation Stone Garden, 2018, U.S. Department of Homeland Security for Grant Period 3, 118 to 53119.
Good evening, Mayor, uh, Commissioner, Mister Perez.
So, Chief, how are you?
How are you doing today? I won't talk too much. The, uh, there's a resolution for a $125,000 grant for, uh, 2018, 2019. And, uh, these, uh, funds, uh, are not released yet, but that's what the resolution is for, to get it going. So, it's a continuous Stone Garden operation, the same thing we've been doing for, for a lot of, uh, years and, uh, we're, we got a little bit more money, so it's just good.
Right. You have a motion?
I have a motion.
You have a motion to approve by Commissioner Garza, second by Commissioner Jones. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed? Motion carries. Keep bringing the money, Chief, absolutely. Next business and orders, item 3B, Discussion and Possible Action to Approve Resolution Number 2018-13, Authorizing the Purchase and Financing of Four 2018 Dodge Chargers for the Rio Grande City Police Department. 3B.
Yes, sir. This is, uh, for the lease purchase of, uh, four, uh, Dodge Chargers, uh, for the department. The, uh, I, I think that we get, I got with Mister Cantú on the financing part of it. And, uh, the, each car costs $23,381 and the equipment that goes along with it is $8,760. There's, uh, different options to purchase the vehicles if you all would approve of them. And it's, uh, from two to five years. The five-year, when I'll, I'll let Mister Cantú explain that.
Good evening, Mayor, Good evening.
Councilman, uh, the financing for the purchase of vehicles would be either on a three-year or five-year lease, which we would prefer having a five-year. I've talked to the chief here. He says, uh, they can budget out of the forfeiture account, which would help out, uh, our budget at the general fund. Uh, that would, uh, alleviate some of the expenses on the, on the vehicle maintenance repairs, which we had close to $65,000 last year. We're closing down on forty thousand this year, and most of those, uh, expenses are on the old vehicles. So by purchasing these four vehicles, that should take, alleviate some of those expenditures and remove that twenty-nine thousand over to the forfeiture. And that'll give us more room in the, in the general fund for budget and other things.
Okay, well, that sounds reasonable, the twenty-eight thousand seven hundred dollars a, a year for five years, not bad. I think it's reasonable.
Yeah, they're, they're getting a very good price on the vehicles and...
Now, are these, uh, are these vehicles, uh, ready to go?
They, uh, we will, if we can sign off on the, the, from the fifteen, get all the paperwork together and everything that needs to be done, um, we should get them by, hopefully by the end of Ju- July. Um, if not, uh, the twenty-nineteens come in and we won't get them to provide that toll, you know, if we go beyond that point, so...
Uh, where are we buying them from?
It, it's a, it's a government, uh...
Yeah, it's from buy board, I think the buyers, the sellers are from...
It's gonna be from the government.
From the valley?
Yes, uh, that's, uh, a company where we bought the other units that we have before, and, uh, which are the grand units, so, you know, we can go through the buy board and, you know, they, uh, they ship them over here, they, uh, put all the stuff on the lead equipment on them and, you know, the only thing that they won't have is the radio, the, the computers and, uh, what was the other deal?
For the radios and the camera system and the cycle for whatever units we're designing.
Go ahead and educate me on this, just to make sure I have it right, uh. So we don't go from any of the local dealers?
No, because we would have to go through, uh, another process with that in the buy board, you don't, you don't have to get codes for, uh, for any of the vehicles that we purchased, and, you know, it's, it's a different process that we would have to take. And aside of that, the vehicles that we purchased, they're set up for police, uh...
Their police package?
Their police package and their alternators are different, the way they're set up, they're suspensionally different, so that's why we buy them to, uh, police.
And Mayor, the last time we approached, uh, we looked at other departments and purchasing vehicles, I did take what the buy board sends us to the local dealerships and challenge them to see if they could match it, and they couldn't come close to what they're offering them for. So we've tried that already, uh, on different vehicles for different departments. Buy board's just giving us such a better deal.
It's a twenty-three thousand dollar, uh, brand new car. It's hard to, hard to beat because they get them in, uh, surplus amounts and, you know, they, they go all over the place and, you know, they're getting, they're, uh, purchasing, a lot of agencies purchase a lot of cities except LA, this county and...
So there's gonna be some vehicles that we're gonna be putting out of commission or where are we gonna transfer?
We've, no, we will be, uh, the majority of the cars we have purchased with forfeiture accounts, so we would have to decommission, uh, you know, some of them and, you know, use some of that same equipment, which is, uh, the radio, the, the camera system and the computer systems. And, uh, uh, the people that will be doing this for us will do that part for, for free, so basically we're getting a good deal for...
At that point, could we do the same or we can't do the same, Mr. Perez? Ask these dealers, dealers to see if they can match anything?
I actually sat down with, uh, Mr. Canales.
So we already did?
Yes, and I took him, uh, in fact, I tried, uh, three different times.
For these four vehicles?
Yeah, but, but like, uh, Mr. Garza said, these vehicles are special police packages, you know, with a different suspension and stuff like that, so we need to kind of be careful on what you're asking for.
They have bigger capacity, radiators, alternators, they're...
Built for that, right.
Yeah, they're specially built.
But I've tried regular trucks and, and cars outside from the police department for that simple reason that I wanted to give the business to the local businesses. And I actually sat down with Mr. Canales several times and said, "You sure you can match this so that we can come to you instead of going somewhere else?" And they tried several times, but they, 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 they agreed they couldn't come close.
So, and we did the same thing with Payne Ford?
Both, yes, sir.
Sure. Alright.
I assume movement?
Okay, we have a motion to approve.
A second.
Have a second by Commissioner Ramírez, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, motion carries, thank you. Next, uh, business and orders, item three C, discussion and possible action to approve resolution number twenty eighteen dash fourteen authorizing the sale and conveyance of five nine seven six acres of, or five point nine seven six acres of lots one, one oh four and one fifteen of the Valle Rico del Rio Ran- Rio Grande Little Farm subdivision in Star County to the Rio Grande City four B Economic Development Corporation for economic development purposes and authorize execution of documents for sale and conveyance of the reference real property.
Mayor, Commissioners, uh, what you have before you is a negotiation for a land purchase that has been approved by USDA Rural Development as part of the USDA Rural Business Development Grant that the Rio Grande City EDC was awarded. Um, and those funds are, uh, to be applied towards the purchase of the real property that's described in your packet.
Everything's been looked at by attorneys, you're good there.
Very good.
Alright, so staff recommends moving forward?
Staff recommends it, please.
Okay.
I assume movement?
Okay, we have a motion to approve by Commissioner Garza.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Ramírez, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, motion carries. Thank you, Ms. Ginn.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Next business and orders, item four, city managers' report, letter A, discussion and possible action to declare certain equipment as surplus.
Got Chief Castillo one more time, is he gone? He's got some items that are being declared as, uh, surplus and will be auctioned off.
The vehicle, uh, surplus, uh, we, uh, we put it out for, for auction with our regular car auctions and, uh, if there's other equipment that, uh, gets on the list, so that will go together with, uh, with the auction, which is, we're working on one maybe in the next couple of months. So, you know, uh, vehicles will go to commission and then be sold, and if there's, uh, equipment there that has, uh, belongs to the other departments, so those go to, uh, the other, you know, the money goes back to the general fund.
Have a motion at this time?
I assume movement?
Okay, we have a motion to declare certain equipment as surplus. Have a second by Commissioner Jones, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, motion carries. Thank you, Chief. Next, uh, business and orders, item five A, contracts and agreements, letter A, discussion and possible action to select a low bid and awarded contract for consultation for a TWDB lift station rehabilitation project number seven three six four four CID zero one.
Got Mr. Guerra from, uh, Real Delta?
Mr. Guerra? Mayor, gentlemen, ladies, um, on April fourth, we, we opened up bids for this project, we received four bids, uh, for the project. They ranged from one point five 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 million to three point zero four two million. Uh, we ran a bid tabulation, the, uh, the low bidder, one point five five five, was a five-star clock construction, they had some, uh, addition errors in their bid. It bumped it up to one point six five seven, uh, but it's still within, uh, uh, the budget. Uh, what, what we're looking at and what we're talking about here is the total project bid, we had several alternates, but this total project bid, base bid would, uh, encompass rehabbing, replacing six of the seven original lift stations that were on your project list. The one we left out as, as an alternate was the Best Western Lift Station and needed the least work, it was in a priority. But it did include a little bit over nine hundred linear feet of eight-inch sewer line that will run, uh, to the Solis Lift Station that will allow us to abandon the thirty-one sixty-seven grinder lift station that has been a problem, uh, both for odor and spills and stuff in, in, in the past, so we still come out pretty good, I think. Uh, we're able to do everything within the budget that y'all have approved already with the Water Development Board. So what we've recommended is y'all award this contract for the total base bid, and, and the exact amount is, uh, excuse me just a minute, is for one point six, one million six hundred fifty-seven thousand, one hundred and six dollars and seventy-nine cents, the five-star clock construction. Uh, we did send everything for review to the Water Development Board, we received an email from, uh, Ms. Nikki Heiss this morning, uh, acknowledging the receipt of all the documents and giving us the go-ahead to award the contract if we fulfill.
Which is the lift station that, uh, we're, uh, we're gonna leave, possibly leave out?
The Best Western Lift Station is right there in, in front of Denny's.
The one by highway?
Yeah, it's a small lift station, it only serves the Denny's and, uh, the Best Western and...
And that area.
That's it, no more.
Yeah, okay.
Um, McCoys, I think, and, and, uh, Chili's.
Just to be clear on the, what was the error exactly, cause it goes from one five 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 to one six seven?
It was addition errors, Mayor, the unit prices, we can't touch the unit prices, but we check for the addition, multiplication errors in the totals. And, and, uh, these are unit price contracts, whereas we bid out so many linear feet of pipe or, you know, and, and they give us a price per foot. Uh, so the unit prices stay, we don't, we can't change that, but we can check to make sure that there are addition errors, if there aren't addition errors on, on, on the totals. If they're in our favor, uh, less, well, we can ask them if they wanna do it for the, for the, the correct amount. The, the, the bid documents stipulate that unit prices will, will, uh, will be, will determine what the final cost is. And so, in this case, his addition was in his favor, the errors were in his favor, uh, though, that's what took it up to the one point six. I, I had attached a bid tabulation, uh, with, with my letter of recommendation, I don't know if it made it to your packet, but if you look on the bid tabulation, and I don't know, uh, I think when I, when I sent it, it was in color. Uh, the, the, the numbers on, on his column that were in red were, were the numbers that, that were in bold, were the numbers that were corrected.
That's on, uh, that's on, uh, on five B, right, the tabulation?
Five A.
Five A.
Five A.
The numbers in bold are the numbers, the corrected numbers? And next, in the column next to it into the bottom, I put in red with, with the bid numbers where, so you can see where, where the, where the differences were.
I have one question.
Yes, sir.
The lift station next to the, uh, fire department, is that, that's gonna be replaced or what are we doing with that one? The pump, the pump, not the lift station?
Oh, that's a booster pump, that's not part of the...
That's not part of the fire, oh, no. That's a water pump.
Okay, that's a water, that's where the water distribution system. Total, what we'll be doing is we'll be rehabbing the VFW lift station where it's at, putting in a new pump system and skater control, new fencing, of course, bringing everything up to, to spec or up to TCEQ regulations. We'll be replacing the Rio Motors lift station. We will be replacing the BVA lift station. We will be rehabbing the Blue Bonnet lift station in place with the acquisition of the pro- uh, of, of the land hasn't come through yet, and that was part, that was an alternate. Uh, so we, we will be rehabbing that, that Blue Bonnet lift station in place. We'll be replacing the Los Zarcias lift station, we added a larger wet well than was previously proposed for more storage. And we will be replacing the Pizza Lys lift station. And then as part of that lift station, we added nine hundred, over nine hundred feet of, of gravity line to bypass the old thirty-one sixty-seven grinders, we can completely eliminate that one.
The Blue Bonnet lift station, that we, uh, acquired a property, we needed to relocate that?
Still working on it.
Still working on it?
Yes, sir. Uh, what we may do is, and what was suggested by Water Development Board, is that we update, uh, the, the, uh, their, their project plan and, and put us in line for applying for funding next year to maybe do the rest and maybe incorporate some more improvements. We, we need to do some work at the wastewater treatment plant, maybe make that part of the project, uh, so that we'd be available for funding application at the end of the year for next year. Tackle some of those projects.
So where are we in reference to being over budget here? Is it was one point six, but it's a one, are we okay?
Yes, sir.
Yes. We're within budget.
We were able to move the balance needed from contingency, we had about eighty-nine thousand in contingency. Uh, we were still left with nineteen thousand, something unforeseen comes along during construction. So we'll be able to cover, uh, the total project base bid as, uh, the engineers recommending.
And the total project is how many of the lift stations are we there?
We're doing six lift stations, sir. As alternates, we had the Best Western Lift Station, which was a, a lower priority. We had put in an alternate to move the Blue Bonnet Lift Station, and we had an alternate to take the, the, the pumps that are at the Ringel Lift Station from out of the pit up to the, to ground level to, just to make it easier to maintain and, and just eliminate that hazard for the operators. Uh, it's working, we don't need to make the changes now, but if we can get ourselves on, on the new, uh, funding list for next year, we can incorporate all that plus whatever we need to do at the wastewater treatment plant into another project and get that done at that time.
At that time.
But for this, for the purposes of, of this project, uh, in order to ask more funding now, it would have extended getting started probably another eight, nine months, if we were able to make it into, cause the only, uh, funding would be available would be whatever was left over from projects that are already in line for the current funding. So we were risking not, not even getting that funding and still putting everything off another eight, nine months.
So we can at this time accommodate six and then with future plans of addressing some of the others?
Yes, sir, well, it, it was really the priorities you had, it's gonna take care of, of your problems with the TCEQ.
So really identifying these six, we'll be in good with, uh, TCEQ and any of the other, cause these are the priorities?
The others were like wishes, the wish list.
I have a question on the Ringel Lift Station, why was it built underground, now we're trying to elevate it back up to level?
It's in a pit that's eleven feet deep, uh, when it was built, it was built with any, there were no isolation valves on the suction lines. It technically considered a, a confined space. When it was built without the isolation valves on the discharge line, anytime the, the, the crew has to go in there and work on the pumps, if the lift station backs up, the water level on the lift station comes up above the level of the pipes and it wind up working with raw sewage in the, in the well.
The well would get flooded?
Yeah, and then what happened also is since the perforations are through the walls, if there was to be a leak or gases eating through there, uh, the, the sewer gases that are dangers are heavy gases, they don't go up the top of that pit, they stay there. And without a monitor or something to warn you, somebody could climb those stairs right into it and, and possibly lose their lives, it's happened before.
The difference for the, this project is that we took consideration and opinion and ideas from all people, of the individuals that are gonna be involved in maintenance, maintenance and addressing the needs, so that, of course, was taken into consideration as far as the actual engineering of the project.
Yes, sir, and we added some capacity on the wet wells.
These, uh, so, uh, so, uh, the council can have a better understanding of what they look like. They would be similar to the ones that are on, uh, on, uh, Abasolo and, uh, or I would say, uh, Flores and Eisenhower, right?
And Kramer.
Yeah, that, the one at the high school.
The pumps are above, above ground.
Except these, these, these pumps will have three pumps.
Yeah.
And they'll be skid mounted, control panel, they'll have skater, so will be set up at, at the, either here at the office or, or at the sewer plant, whichever, wherever they want, to be able to monitor those lift stations. That's something that we would like to do with the next project, is put all your lift stations, I think you've got sixteen, fifteen or sixteen lift stations in your system. Be able to monitor all of them, so you see what they're doing at one central plate. And almost all this new technology allows the operators to, 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 to access it on their iPhones also, so even, even the, uh, Ms. Heiss can, can get in there and see what, what everything's doing, check them all and see what's going on. And likewise, they'll send, uh, uh, an alert if something's wrong at one of the lift stations. So that, rather than wait until somebody calls and says, "You've got sewer running in the street," you know, this thing will give you an alarm, say, "Hey, your high alarm is going off, something's not going, something's not right." We can go check it and catch it before it causes a problem.
Mayor, to highlight the, the focus, uh, all of this is, uh, addressing the TCEQ, uh, issues that were previously identified. And we're also working on the sewer plant, uh, as we need to be in the planning stages to also, uh, focus on the TCEQ findings.
And there was a staff meeting, uh, staff, myself, uh, Gilbert and of course, Mr. Perez. We sat to follow up with the items that are not gonna be funded with the additional repairs needed throughout the system, both water, storage, distribution, collection and treatment. So I know we've contacted already, um, Mr. Hollis to start working with the Texas Water Department application. And like Gilbert mentioned, we are behind, uh, if there were any funds available, but it would take a long wait, and we do have that commitment to TCEQ. But we are already starting the process to apply and be on the pipeline for the next funding round.
Okay, we have, uh...
Does this, does, uh, the project of the one on, uh, on, uh, Blue Bonnet, uh, does that, uh, is that, is that thing gonna be relocated or not?
That was the, an alternate, if we'd been able to acquire the property in time, we could've. It would've cost us eighty thousand dollars more because they would involve a new wet well. Uh, but we don't have the property, so we can't do that right now. Uh, what we're gonna do is rehab it in place, uh, it, it's very likely those pumps that we put there, once we get the property, we can put in a wet well and relocate the pumps.
We have the motion. Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Ramírez, we have a second by Commissioner Garza, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, motion carries.
Thank you.
Next, uh, business and orders, item five B, discussion and possible action to execute a contract with Five Star Clock Construction for TWDB Lift Station Rehabilitation Project number seven three six four four CID zero one.
This is basically the same thing, Mayor, for you were, uh, awarding the, the little bit and now is the execution of the contract.
Okay, we have a motion to approve, Commissioner Ramírez, second by Commissioner Garza, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, motion carries, next, uh, is item C, discussion and possible action to approve producer agreement for the Fajita Cookoff and Home of the Vaquero Event.
You heard the presentation earlier?
Yes, we did. Anything to add to the, to the contract, anything?
According to council...
Everything good?
Yeah, we have recommended.
It's the same as last year.
Same as last year.
Okay, we have a motion by?
Mr. Ramírez, I second.
Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Ramírez, second by Commissioner Garza, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, motion carries, next. Item D, discussion and possible action to approve producer agreement for the twenty eighteen RGC and Solido present Freedom Fest event.
No different, it's another agreement, sir, and the presentation just covered.
Okay. Staff recommends it, so we have a, we have a motion by Commissioner Jones. We have a second by Commissioner Garza, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, she carries, next is item E, discussion and possible action to approve a memorandum of agreement with the RGC CID for the use of the Ramiro Viegas Gym for the Boys and Girls Youth Club Summer Program.
It's a yearly event, Mr. Pedales is, uh, here, he's been, uh, working with them on this, uh, MOU.
Yes, sir, on, uh, on the inter-office, uh, memorandum, you got the, uh, copy of the, uh, MOA agreement. And, uh, I attended the, uh, school board meeting yesterday and it was approved for the item E. Uh, and we'll be utilizing the gymnasium, uh, June first to July, to June twenty-ninth, it will be just a month. I know that, uh, the school district has something in the afternoon that they utilize the gym. It's a reason why we ask for it in the morning.
Okay, so staff recommends, good, any issues, nothing?
Nothing.
Okay?
I assume movement?
Okay, we have a motion to approve, have a second by Commissioner Ramírez, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, she carries, next is item F, discussion and possible action to approve a memorandum of agreement with the RGC ID for the Summer Track and Field Program by F.
Again, Mr. Pedales has been working on with the RGC ID on the summer track?
Yes, sir, and, uh, again, I attended the, uh, the meeting, uh, last night at the school board meeting, and it was approved as well. Uh, in your inter-office memorandum of agreement, it has a memorandum, uh, all the information is, uh, we're gonna be utilizing the, uh, track and field, uh, Joe, Joe, Joe Sanchez Stadium from June fourth through July thirty-first.
Second, have a motion by Commissioner Garza, second by Commissioner Jones, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, she carries, next is item D, uh, G, discussion and possible action to amend the lease agreement with Valley Metro for rental per premise, premises at four oh five East Mirasoles Street, suite A, Lopez de Jirina Complex and four oh eight East Main Street, Bessie's Landing. Five G?
Mayor, Commissioners, Valley Metro is downsizing. They had a little space on the Jirina Courtyard
where, if y'all recall, PUD used to be. They have that area and they also have Besse's Landing. So, they no longer need to use that space at the Jirina Courtyard. I know Ms. Sarah Jerlum is present with Valley Metro. And they're requesting to amend their agreement to reduce the square footage.
Good evening, Mayor and City Commissioners. My name is Sarah Jerlum. I'm the Assistant Director for Planning, representing Valley Metro tonight. To reiterate what Ms. Baya said, we were actually able to promote our office member who was staying within that space. She's driving more, mostly due to the frequency of our ridership. And so, we don't feel that the space is necessary as much anymore. We are very happy within Besse's Landing as a historical building. Our drivers love it, as a matter of fact. Our staff just came from there and one driver was in the building. But I don't know if you all have any specific questions for me regarding this.
Yes, on the lease agreement I see here, the date of February 1st, 2018.
Yes, sir.
Okay, because we already made something.
So, that was just when we were able to get it signed. There were negotiations, trying to see if we were able to lessen our rent with the city, but we were able to get it signed in February. I know it's an odd date. The hope is that we'd be actually able to move the agreement on a fiscal year to make it more regular. But because we were looking at different adjustments and trying to see what worked best for the city, our staff on the property as well as administration, you know, we decided to have it signed then.
Okay, how much are you paying right now?
We are paying 1,292.
1,200 and what?
92.
Okay, so.
So, you'll be subtracting.
Right, the reduction, but as far as the lease goes, if, in other words, if we approve this lease, are we retroacting back to February the 1st?
No. If you approve the lease as it's presented here, you're just continuing the agreement with the lower rate, but you are not gonna give them credit from January the 1st.
Because they're just simply giving up space. So, there was not a change in what they were paying. If there's a difference because of the spacing reduction, that's it, going forward. It's not retroactive.
This is the same term.
But help me understand, why would we retroactive to February the 1st if we already made? I mean, just help me understand that portion.
The term has always been the same, sir.
The terms stay the same, Mayor.
The only area, yeah.
The only thing that will change is the amount.
Initially, that's when we reviewed it back in February.
Right.
We could change it if you would like. We could change it and put the date, which is today's date, so you could feel more comfortable with the contract.
But they're not requesting reimbursement, am I correct?
No, there's no.
They're just, you know, the continuation of the contract with a new rate, starting, I guess, this month. So, I got no problem with that. I have the recommendation from the attorneys that we continue with it and.
Yeah, you can, you signed it today.
Okay, so no issue.
And there's no issue of retroact to be on there, okay, that you would give them credit.
Anything else?
I make the motion.
Okay, we have, actually, Commissioner Ramirez made the motion. We have a second by Commissioner Garza. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed. Motion carries. Thank you.
As always, Mayor, Commissioner, we really appreciate the support of your community in connecting your residents to education, hospitals, and all of that. So, we really appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, business in orders, item 6A, planning. Discussion and possible action on request by Rio Delta Engineering for preliminary and final approval of the Adrian Garcia subdivision.
Good evening, Mayor, Commissioners. This three-lot residential subdivision has been approved by the Planning and Zoning Commission for final approval. The, so I think that we're pending the installation of septic tanks in an agreement with El Tanque Water Supply, which both have been submitted to the plan department. And like I said, everything should be in order for a final approval.
No issues there, Mr. Milan? This with the following conditions are addressed, which is 1 through 5 there.
Those are standard comments to follow the chapter 13 model subdivision rules. They basically stay in all the residential memorandums.
Did it go through planning and zoning?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
We're, I'm trying to figure out where this, where this is at on 755.
This is south of the 755 Country Estates. This is along Pearl Drive. As you enter 755 Country Estates, you go.
Oh, okay, okay. I got.
Staff recommends.
Yes, sir.
Yes. Okay, we have a motion at this time. Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Ramirez, second by Commissioner Garza. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed. Motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Milan.
Thank you. Just real quickly, just don't forget, Saturday is the Rabies Clinic. It's gonna have three tickets, 300 tickets only, I'm sorry. And first come, first served, 8 to 12.
Mr. Milan, look into the camera, sir, and say those words again, please. Do a promo.
Don't forget, the Rabies Clinic is on Saturday, 8 to 12. Residents, have to show your ID. It's $5 only. It's three pets per household.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it. Next, business in orders, item 7, executive session, chapter 551, Texas Government Code, section 551.071, consultation with attorney, section 551.072, Texas Local Government Code, and section 551.074, personnel matters. Items A, B, and C. It is. 801. We're reconvening, item 8, reconvene into regular session in consideration of action on matters discussed during executive session, including the following. At this time, there was no action on any of these items, A, B, or C. This time, do we have a motion to adjourn?
As a movement.
So, we have a motion to adjourn by Commissioner Ramirez, second by Commissioner Garza. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed. Motion carries. Meeting adjourned. Nine o'clock.